All right, it's 5:05. The call to order the City of Two Harbors Committee, the whole agenda meeting. I've seen nothing under appearances, so we'll get into administrator updates.
Thank you, Council President. So, we've had a little bit of excitement last week. We have received word from Congressman Pete Stauber and Senator Tina Smith, and then Senator Klobuchar, that the city did receive $3.5 million for the wastewater treatment plant project. All of those individuals have reached out to the city congratulating us, and I just really want to thank them for all their hard work that they have done to get the wastewater treatment plant project that $3.5 million. That passed, I believe, last week, and it is through the EPA. And so, very exciting, and if you get a chance, please reach out to those individuals and thank them for all their hard work. One other thing we had received last week was communication from Representative Julie Santi. She is working on a draft bill to provide tax credit to municipal utility customers who were affected by the polar vortex in February of 2021. That bill is Bill 3944, and she's been working on that. I had some people from the MMUA reach out and some similar other cities in the surrounding areas that were also affected by that extremely high gas rates that we experienced last year. So, they suggested, you know, that we try to get really excited about pushing this bill and moving it forward. And if you guys have any questions, let me know, and we can discuss. And then Jennifer is here. She did testify today for a bill with Tom Bock. So she can discuss that later. That was in regards to receiving some DNR property near the lake. Also, I wanted to say that Patty and I had a really good conversation today with Brandon Fitzsimmons, who is helping us with the interim city administrator position. We did speak to one of the individuals that we received from the League of Minnesota Cities, and I guess we're looking for some direction of how to move forward. Patty and I had initial conversation today, and I think we were really excited and hopeful with this individual. Patty, if you have any other comments?
Thanks, Miranda. We met with him initially. We had a great conversation. We explained a lot of the situations that are going on with the city, a lot of the projects that we have ongoing. He asked us about our staffing, about all of our many entities that we have. So we exchanged a lot of information. We still need to go down the road of negotiating rates and things like that. But basically, it comes down to right now how we want to proceed. If we want to have the Personnel Committee meet with this individual, or how we want to do that, if we want to have the whole council do that. This is not going to be for a period of one to two years like we had originally adopted by the council. Unfortunately, that time period is a little bit too long to ask someone to come and be an interim. So what we found in dealing with Brandon and the other individuals that were on that list is that it's probably more likely about six-month time period that we're looking at. So, but this individual has a lot of experience with several other cities, and some of the projects that he's worked on lately are a new liquor store, a wastewater treatment plant improvement project. I mean, just many similarities that were just quite informational. I mean, it was just funny how many things we had in common, I guess, with the things that he's worked on recently. So looking for some direction from the council, how we want to proceed with that, because the individual would be prepared to begin working as soon as we could work out a contract. And so, we were kind of hopeful that we could start that process and maybe even have approved so as soon as the next regular council meeting, if that would work out.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I know that the last time we had this discussion with Patty and Miranda had both talked with Brandon Flaherty and Hood, and there were specific things that we were going to discuss at the Personnel Committee meeting with regards to this individual helping us move down the path to finding a permanent administrator. So I would ask that this be referred to the Personnel Committee to review at our next meeting. And I think it's next week, but we could certainly push that out if it's necessary.
One other thing I wanted to find out, Mr. Chair, if I could, is that Mr. Fitzsimmons had begun going down the list of those individuals, and they're very far and few in between. A lot of the people are just not available. Some have recent surgeries, some are working with other cities. And in fact, Mr. Flaherty is working with other cities who are looking for individuals for an interim, and those other cities have not been as fortunate to find anyone. So I think that our location helps us in this. People are, you know, I think this gentleman is interested in coming up to the shore for a while, which has been helpful to us. But I will say that I feel fortunate that we have found someone that seems to be so well- brought up position.
Yeah, and also, maybe you said this, Patty, but we did have, we narrowed it down to about three to four individuals, and those were beat out. There was one person left out of that group that we talked to today. You know, so like Patty said, it's not that easy to be able to weed through that.
And again, Mr. Chair, I just say that, you know, the Personnel Committee needs to meet this week just to get the ball rolling and make sure we don't miss out on an opportunity that seems to be pretty good, according to the gals that have already talked to them, that, hey, we should do that. That's you and me, so we could do that. If you have any.
Yeah, we'll have to look at when we can settle for posting that.
Yep.
All right. Was that all you have for administrator updates? Attorney updates?
You have in your packet Section 2.40, 2.51 of Code, which I have revised consistent, I hope, with what was asked of me in the last meeting. These have to do with the process for appointment of committee commission members and residency requirements. So I offer that to you for your review. I think I encapsulated what the council was after, but it's a start. That's all I made.
Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, one of the things on terms is it really doesn't set out who tracks the terms. There should be a roster of all members of committees and the year that they were appointed, so that we can systematically process this.
We do that.
Okay. No, you don't. I've been on Trees and Trails for eight years, and it's never passed. If I wanted to continue on.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we track.
Okay.
That's up to the mayor to consider.
No, it's after six years.
I understand what you're saying.
And publicize.
I understand that. But we work with the mayor regarding who publishes what, regarding when it gets published. Chris, can you explain what we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I've sat down with city staff ever since I first got elected, and I think the process is really tight. There's an Excel spreadsheet that we have that shows exactly the resolution, the appointment that was made. Council passing, there might be some misunderstanding as to, typically what we do is in three years, and then it's advertised. I mean, I've advertised here, how many times have I said, hey, if you want to apply, there's open means? And then the process is that we have a list, which, you know, we've been trying to tighten it up, because it has definitely been, you know, there's a lot of back and forth and people leaving and so on and so forth. But if I recall correctly, you were asked if you wanted to serve again a few years ago, because I remember making the appointment again for you to be on there. I think that was before you were on the council. And I don't recall the timeframe, but that, so that process does get followed every March. In fact, there's an email that went out not that long ago saying, hey, it's time to, you know, it's March, it's time to go look at who needs to be reappointed and so on. And so, I mean, we advertise it. We've advertised on Facebook, we've advertised on City Facebook, we've advertised in the paper. So I don't know if the process, to me, when I look at the process, I think it's actually fairly tight. The issue that we run into is just the, if you look at how many commissions do we have? I think it's seven commissions. And you look at each commission as seven members, and then you look at the amount of people that come and go. I mean, Library Board, I think they need another personnel. I mean, it's pretty consistent, but there's always somebody falling off a commission, if that commission is needed. So, you know, I think maybe what would be beneficial is for us to walk through what the process is. I'd love to explain what I understood the process to be. Now, you have pointed out to me that, and I didn't notice, that it's two consecutive terms. So it's, if I understand, two consecutive three-year terms. Then it's like one of those things where you should somebody be appointed. But I do know after nine years, in fact, it wasn't that long ago, Council Glazer, she said, I hate being that person, because when she was mayor, she had to be that person and say, hey, you've been on commissions for nine years. There's somebody else that's interested in serving. That's typically what I use as a litmus to put somebody else on. And so that happened not that long ago. We had somebody that was, there was multiple commissions where people have been serving longer than nine years. And so then it's like, okay, you gotta make those changes. So hopefully, that's explanatory, but if we're trying to just go through the process and take it down, I mean, it's, there is a process. It is followed pretty well. Kerry keeps a really nice database of everything. I think there was a one time, like, we lost in debate or something, you know, early on. But we got it pretty organized, and we spent quite a good time on it.
And I will say that right now, we haven't noticed prepared, but we're holding off on advertising it until we get this language ready now. So we're not, you know.
I do think that we have better luck getting applicants if we specified it was for a three-year term. Currently, when we ask someone to serve on the planning commission, it's like you're in it for life. And I don't think people are willing to do that.
Yeah, so the other thing, Derek, just in fairness, we do a meeting. We went through and talked with every single, I think we forgot the airport question. I'm not sure on that.
We did the airport question.
Did we do that? Yeah, me, I wasn't there. But we go through and talk about what their terms were. We literally in the presentation show everybody what their terms were, how long they're there, and that. So I don't know if that's a misunderstanding, but some people aren't full three years. Keep in mind, some people come in to replace somebody, and then they take over that position for a period of time.
Well, I think what Derek is saying, that we should put in that publication, and it's possible that we left that word in only the last time.
Oh, that is three years, sorry.
But in this new add, we've got it specified out. I think Jennifer drafted the original, and I was just adding to it, what commission and then what the term is length. Because again, some of the differences are there because they're the remainder of a term that is ours, someone already started. And the reason we do that is so that the terms are staggered, and they remain staggered, so we don't have everyone going off of a commission every time.
To Mr. Chair, I think it's really benefi, I started thinking about this a lot over the last couple of weeks, and I love the idea of bringing everybody into one, or trying to get everybody into one session where everybody can meet them and ask them questions and all that stuff. I think that's tremendously powerful and valuable, because, you know, I'm only one person asking them questions, you know? And I think if everybody had a chance to do that, that'd be awesome. So I'd like to add that into the process and be clear in the process with what it is that the expectation of the mayor is. So I don't know if that helps you, Derek, but I think that would be, you know, that way, if something, I mean, truthfully, it gets to be a lot of work tracking who's interested in commissions and, you know, because it's a lot, it changes a lot. I mean, I can tell you, there's probably a couple of commissions right now that aren't even able to meet, because they don't have four of them, you know? So, yeah, that's the other thing, you know, so it's. And then during the pandemic, I mean, I tried to get people to, you know, to do things, and there just wasn't a lot of interest to participate at that time, to understand why. You know, so we're, I'm thankful that we were able to get through that and still had a lot of people serving. Is there a change that you're suggesting, or something you want to see different?
Well, I do know on membership, I think the first step is we need to specify that they complete an application for the community.
Yep.
That's something that, not in the membership here.
No, there is, there is an application.
There is, I understand.
But do you want it more detailed, or do you want it different?
Well, it should be specified in here. Right now, it says that they will be nominated by the council. We can't nominate someone off the street. We have to nominate off of a membership.
We push everybody to an application, though. I think that was changed to Patty and her team, and I think it's great. It gives me a little more, usually it's only one sentence or something, but it's that the person's filling that out at least, and that's extremely helpful. Yeah, so I mean, if you want more detail on that, or if you want that done first, I love that. That makes it a lot easier upfront, because sometimes people will say, like, they'll see and will say, oh, I'd really like to do this thing. It's nice to be able to go to the website, fill out the application, and then that gets in, you know, goes to the internal process. Now, keeping in mind, I do advocate for people who, like, when I heard you, you know, wanted to be on Trees and Trails still, I was excited about that, because I know your passion for that, I know your expertise in that. And so that makes a lot of sense to me.
The other thing, as I said, is the roster should be publicly available, so that people know who's on the planning commission. If they have any questions, they want to talk to the planning commission member, and who they can talk to within the community. It doesn't have to be the councilor if he's having to.
I might be wrong in that, but I understood that to be on the website. I thought we always did that, put that on the website as part of the process. The planning members aren't, is it just?
But it certainly can be added, it's not a big deal.
Sure.
The only thing is that their personal information can't be on there.
Go ahead.
Just a question for the attorney. Was there, is there any, is there any state statutes that refer to the Charter Commission and how those members are appointed, such as there are with the HRA?
I didn't touch those, just because of the way they are creatures of statute, like the EDA.
Okay.
And I did change this with the HRA and make it consistent, because it was not consistent with state statute.
And is, but do we have specific language then about the Charter Commission? I guess that's my question, because didn't you say?
The Charter, yeah, the Charter Commission is set up in the Charter and is governed by state statute, dealing with charter cities and charter commissions. So that's not even addressed, it's in the Charter itself. So I didn't mess with that, I didn't mess with EDA, because I thought they were consistent with, again, the statute. So EDA, HRA, and the Charter Commission are separate animals, so to speak. That HRA language in the code is inconsistent with the state statute, so I changed it so it is consistent. I didn't touch anything that didn't need to be modified.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, former Administrator Walker, Dan Walker, expressed to me when he was here, that maybe this is time for, you know, the Charter, to start looking at potentially moving to a statute toward a city, which is a very defined, I know Silver Bay has that, some other cities have that. I think that might be something that should be explored. I think there's just a lot of advantages to something like that, because it, under statute, it defines all the rules versus the Charter and possibly dealing with new things and changes. Again, it might not be something that makes sense, but I think having, exploring that might make sense as a council.
Did you have something else to add, Derek?
Yeah, I am concerned with the membership reform, because I know the Trees and Trails Committee will lose two members by this new ordinance, proposed ordinance.
And I, Mr. Chair, as well, have received feedback from numerous members, and again, I try to keep it so it's one, maybe two people. I try to really minimize. They don't have people that are outside city limits, but I have gotten feedback from people that they feel pretty strongly that they should be allowed to participate in the things we do in our city. So I just express that as well. I think there's some really good people that are serving that are just outside our city limits, and they feel pretty strongly that the things that happen in Two Harbors impact them. I know that was a discussion, I don't know, ten years ago or whatever, we made this change to allow 55616. And so, and actually, I thought it was, I'd always been told it was, Nyf River was allowed to participate in that zip code. My understanding is it just 55616.
Does anybody else have any comments on that?
Mr. Chair, is this an item that's to be voted on this evening? I'm just looking really quick here. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I did have it slated to put on for number five, in new business, this evening, if everybody saw fit. Obviously, if there's revisions that need to be made, we can talk about that.
I'm just wondering, considering the questions that Councilor Passy has asked and some of the issues that the mayor has just brought up, I'm wondering if this is something that we want to move to committee just for further review before we make any vote?
Yeah, I think that that's wise. What committee were you thinking?
I was thinking Public Affairs, because there might be some policy issues that we want to address as well, with regards to what Councilor Passy was saying. What's, you know, what's the process? So let's spell out the process and policy, so that it matches what the attorney has given us right here. Is that, I mean, and I don't.
I was thinking Public Affairs myself. Does anybody else have any comment on that?
I just have one question. So, moving forward, is a 55616 able to serve, or you gotta be a resident?
Per this language.
Or a business owner?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, we go with someone that you.
And again, that's why I feel that, you know, this needs further evaluation through committee. And I'm not, I'm thankful, the attorney for the information that you've given us and what you've put before us, but I think there's just some questions that we have to ask as a group, and we'll probably be asking you again.
I didn't understand what you wondered on the.
Thank you.
All right. City Clerk, HR updates?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request the addition of consent agenda item number 16, approving the request of the Public Works Director to allow Jesse Henin to attend Class A lease and trailer school in Plymouth for a CDL road test. And then, since we just referred that new business, I was going to add that city code language. Maybe I would like other consent agenda. So request the addition of consent agenda, item number 17, referring to Public Affairs, a proposed court amendment regarding committee and commission appointments. And then, we met with a potential contractor for coordinating the city's cable television system and broadcasting of meetings this week, and we intend to work with the city attorney to establish some contract language, so that we can hire a temporary consultant to provide these services for the city. So we'll be working on that, and we'll have something back for the council at the next regular meeting. Also, I wanted to report that we held a public meeting on March 7th to publicly review the proposed redistricting plan. I'm going to have a brief presentation at the 6 o'clock meeting tonight, and we'll be asking the council to consider adopting the new ward boundaries at the regular meeting under new business. Next, I wanted to express that we held a meeting with Draw Events and city staff last week. The meeting was to introduce our department heads to the promoter and identify communication contacts for issues to be addressed for that event. The group intends to meet every two weeks for the time being. We've also got on the agenda two items for council consideration tonight. First is to consider authorizing an indemnification agreement for the use of the break wall for the Festival of Sale event. And then the second is to authorize the execution of an agreement between the United States of America, the city, and Draw Events for the use of the break wall. And I see Craig Zaborski of Draw Events is here tonight to answer any questions pertaining to these items. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair? I just did number eight. Was that for $2,777,750, or is that just number eight? Another consent agenda?
It's $277.
Okay.
$277.
Okay.
Go that far?
All right, sorry. Does anybody have any questions on Mr. Zaborski regarding the proposed agreements that we've discussed?
Any questions?
If not, we'll get together with the city attorney and draft that language, so that we can have that prepared and get that other agreement off to the Corps of Engineers. That's all I have.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
Thank you. Finance Director, updates?
Thank you. New business, item number four, which is receiving the feasibility report and calling for a public hearing on the proposed 2022 sidewalk improvement project. So I presented the report for your review tonight. Please look that over, and then contact me if you have any questions or concerns. We will be posting in the newspaper for the public hearing for March 28th, and then having that. And at that time, there is a schedule in there on page six, I believe, giving you the project schedule. So the city council holds the improvement hearing, and then at the same night, if the council is agreeable, we'll consider ordering the improvements and also awarding the construction contract. And we plan on the construction of that project being June and July of 2022.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Mo. Miranda, how much are we spending this year on sidewalks?
It's a little over $150,000. And the last page of that report gives you, well, sorry, that does only give you the breakout of the assessed value. So of the $150,000, we're assessing $30,150 with our current sidewalk project, which is $50 per square. And then if you look on page five, that does give you a rough estimate of what the total project costs are, and then what the city's portion is, which is $120,825. And I just want to thank Public Works, Jim Gilbert, Utility Specialist Kerry Seaver, and then of course, Joe Rain for helping and reviewing this report with it. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Community Development Planner, updates?
Thank you. So I have one item on the agenda tonight. It's number 15 on the consent agenda, and it's a request from Friends of the Trees and Trails to do their annual tree planting. They usually plant 25 trees. This year, they're going to do 35. 10 are going to be mountain ash trees. Five or six are going to go to Lakeview Park, so they can replace some of the trees that were damaged during the storm last year. And then, I didn't know that this was going to be on the meeting tonight, but I was at the Capitol today with Senator Bach, testifying on behalf of a bill that he introduced to revert some DNR property back to the city down by the waterfront. So everything went good there, and the DNR is on board with it. It doesn't include the boat launch. They're going to amend the bill to make that an option for the city later on, but for right now, we're just going to worry about the two green spaces. So if all goes well, that will be. So if all goes well, that will be reverted to the city on August 1st. Does anyone have any questions for me? Sorry, I gave them my back to people.
Any questions for us, sir? City Engineer updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. Nice to see you in person after being on the other last couple of meetings. I'm involved in three items tonight on the consent agenda, all on the consent agenda. Items four, seven, and eight. I'll take them a little bit out of order. First of all, following up on Councilor Witter's question about item number eight, the pay request for the wastewater treatment plant. Actually, I believe that amount is $270,750. The pay request is in your packet. I just turned that now. Yeah, the amount due for this application is 270750. That's just a clarification on number eight. While I'm on that, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the wastewater treatment plant. Not a lot has been happening. They've been getting materials in and of course, they have to pay the bills for materials, so we're have to reimburse them if the materials are. Been doing some work on the site, but with the winter conditions, not a lot they can do. They're gearing up so that they can really start to make more significant progress once the conditions are off.
Did they finish all of the blasting there?
I have to check with Brian to see unless there was it. No, in your packet from Brian. Let's see. Since last update, contract has demolished your bypass building, continuous site preparation and rock excavation, and received the first shipment of foreign materials. So it doesn't specifically say if the blasting is complete or not. So I'm sorry, I don't know the answer. I had to double check on that. Any other questions on the wastewater plant project? Okay, if not, we also have the update on our overall projects going on in the city. That's consent agenda item number four, so no action necessary on it other than just acknowledging the updates. Again, with the winter, there's not a lot going on. The couple of most notable things is we did have an initial meeting with the county back on the 20th of February to talk, start talking about the schedule for finishing up the street project. As you know, we've got a couple of blocks left to do this year. Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue both west of Eighth Street. And we've got to deal with the railroad permit on Fifth Avenue. So just talking with the county because they own the contract, so they have to officially do the coordination with the contractor. Just talking about schedule and making sure we've got all our ducts and rail permits and those types of things. Everything's on track. I would anticipate construction will start probably sometime around the end of May. Road restrictions are going on this week. MINDOT puts those on and they're hot for a month and a half. So they probably will haul equipment on the site sometime in early part of May. I would guess I'll start digging probably right around May 15. So we'll be sure to coordinate with the residents as we get a firm schedule. No exact when things are happening. So that's the update on the street project. If there's any questions on that. The other notable project would be MINDOT project for, it was just from Highway 61 all the way through, pretty much the entire city. We did have a meeting with MINDOT on March 1st. They held one of their big group committee meetings and that was a very good meeting. They had several options. They divided the highway up into a couple of different sections to look at, west section and east section. They developed multiple options, so they reviewed those. They, they really put a lot of work into it. I, you know, I commend them for the effort, the thought they're putting through with the different options and the pros and cons. They're getting ready for a public meeting on the 29th of March. And my understanding is they're going to videotape a presentation so people that aren't able to attend in person can watch the prepared presentation. But it's also going to be in-house open, or in-person open house meeting. I believe that's going to be at the county highway shop on Highway 2.
Do you know what time?
Do you know, John, that's 6:00 P.M.?
I thought it was 5:00. I think that was.
It was what, 29th?
29th.
29th.
At 5:00?
I think we have to confirm that. I'm sure they're going to be getting out of notice here pretty quickly. I mean, it's coming up in, in fact, that's two weeks from, two weeks from tomorrow. So that's the most notable update on that project. Other than that, everything else is just kind of status quo from the last couple of weeks. Then the other item I have tonight is item number seven, which again relates to the street project, finishing up the work this year. We have prepared the budget for our services to take the project from where it sits today through completion, and that's included in your packet tonight. The total estimated engineering fees for the completion of the project is $175,000. We've shown a breakdown in the table of the primary tasks that we have to do. The biggest portion of it is construction observation. They're required by contract to have it worked on by August 1st. So assuming they start early May, we've allocated 13 weeks for construction observation based on full time, you know, us being on site when the contractor's on site so that we can keep an eye on what's going on. So if that's the lion's share, that's about 60% of the overall budget. So, and again, it's, all our work is on hourly, so just because it's budget, it doesn't mean that we have to use it. If things are going smoothly and we can reduce our time on site a little bit, you know, if it's the same crew as last year and they know the drill pretty well and, you know, some of those non-critical things, hopefully we can bring the observation in a little bit under budget. This did go to Public Works Committee last week and after a couple of relatively minor questions, the committee recommended it to come forward with the council tonight. And my understanding from the administrator was this doesn't technically need approval because it's part of the original scope of the project that you've already authorized. So it's really just more of information and acknowledgement that we've prepared the budget. It's in your packet and in the consent agenda. You'll acknowledge it and that will be established as the budget for this year. Oh, I'd be glad to have, I'd be glad to try and answer any questions you might have on the budget for this year.
We'll see you.
All right.
Thanks, Phil.
That's all I have today.
All right. Any other agenda questions or additions?
Mr. Chair, I, I see an updated agenda here tonight that has quite a few appearances. And I don't know if those appearances, I don't know if our council policy has changed, but I understand that typically when we have appearances, they're supposed to identify why they're here. That's supposed to be germane to something on the actual agenda. So I'm curious, because we got these updates, I believe, today. Is that a change for our policy now that we're just allowing people to put on the
The policy at this time, from what I understand from the attorney, is that the council president can book anybody that has signed up in advance on the agenda.
Oh, Mr. Chair, clarify. I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning that it just came out today and there's not, no explanation as to why they're here.
I believe I was told in an email. Why John Ramos is here. And I believe, I'd have to look back for my email here.
Mr. Chair, I didn't list them all because I wasn't, I wasn't able to contact one of them. I didn't request that information from one of them. So I just left out all of them. But I do have information I can, John Ramos, I believe, wanted to extend his appreciation to the council for providing him with some entertainment. That was his quote. Tom Kohler did not provide me with the information. I didn't request him of it. Caitlin Cobb wished to speak regarding the mayor and Sharon Erickson also wanted to speak regarding the mayor.
So, Mr. Chair, is it fair if I, since this is about the mayor, if I want to have people at future council meetings speak on my behalf, that that would be allowable, even though that's against our typical practice?
Actually, I see a revised policy come from Public Affairs. I will allow members to come in and speak. All right. Did you have something? All right.
Sorry. I was hustling before the meeting, so I kind of lost some items that I did want to discuss. I really want to thank Jennifer for going to the Capitol today to testify. I did attach, you know, a presentation that she had put together just, you know, to go over what she was doing with that bill. Kathy Erickson had reached out to Patty and myself earlier last week in regards to obtaining, you know, that DNR property and any plans in the future that the city might have. She was recommending that the city meet with Jeff Anderson from the Constein Group. And so our, our thought was that perhaps at the March 28th council meeting, at the 5:00, we would have Jeff Anderson come and just give a presentation to the city council of what he would be able to do. I know Kathy has worked with him in the past for lobbying and finding funding for, you know, waterfront development projects and other future projects that the city might
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries for adjourn.